... meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. The Lunenburg meeting will also be available via Zoom, and the Zoom link is in the meeting agenda on the town's website. There will be a backup of this found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours of the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes taken, votes may be taken as a matter, as a result of these discussions, not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. So the first thing we do is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is public comment for prior issues. I think we're probably going to have public comment for issues we bring up today, but if anybody has public comment for things that we talked about at the last school board meeting or the last tri-board meeting, we can talk about it now. Is there anybody online or in person who has any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Rogers.
I don't know if it would fall in that category, but it's a subject that I would like to speak.
Sure.
In the past.
Mr. Rogers, I think you get a permanent exemption from this rule. Just say what you want.
Thank you. Could I have a note to that effect for my wife?
If you give me one for mine.
Yeah, good. That would be good. I'm Dave Rogers, and I live at 82 Highland Street. And I'm here this evening after I received a memo, which I'm sure you will all be talking about later on, and...
My assistant.
There is a group of paragraphs, possible contributing factors, and there are three of them. You'll hear about this, I'm sure. But there needs to be one more, and that one more is that I do, my considered opinion is that the previous superintendent was not as upfront and as forthright and as honest as I would have liked her. And this will all sort out as we go on this evening, and I thank you for the courtesy.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Is there anybody else that has a public comment about prior issues? All right, not seeing any prior issues comments. We're going to go to Chair's Report, and the Chair's Report is a prepared statement, and I think this is probably going to just start the conversation. Earlier today, Dr. Fortuna sent a memo to myself, the town manager, and the Chair of Financial Committee regarding a budget surplus that was recently discovered. The total amount is $582,115.44, or roughly 2% of our annual budget. This money, this is money that was allocated to the school district for use on education costs but was not used. Obviously, a surplus is better than a debt, but this extra money means that the children in Lunenburg went without for no reason. Having money and not spending it does not accord with the school committee's goal of increasing student achievement. As a result, the school committee is deeply concerned about this budget surplus. To be clear, government and nonprofit entities always operate with some surplus. Having a perfect budget down to the penny is impossible, and having a debt is unhealthy, so every government entity and nonprofit runs a surplus. Normally, the district runs a surplus of around $150,000 to $200,000 on an annual basis. This helps offset emergency expenses, like those related to the fire we had on the first day of school, and is often used at the end of the year to patch holes in various places throughout the budget. The surplus remits to the town once all expenses have been paid. The problem here is that the amount is simply too high to be fairly considered as a routine surplus. Over the last few weeks, the financial picture revealed that this surplus, revealed that this surplus was actually smaller surpluses scattered throughout the district's budget. Notably, this money went unnoticed in the management of the budget, and the checks and balances set up in our system did not work to identify it. Had it been properly identified, our budget would have been constructed very differently. Because the financial picture was inaccurate, we engaged in austerity measures that were not necessary, resulting in diminished services for students. In addition, our perceived needs meant that other parts of the town went without. The school committee is committed to being a good steward of taxpayer dollars. To that end, we plan on doing the following to ensure that money received is spent as directed and that requests for money are based on actual reliable financial forecasts. First, we plan on reviewing hiring practices. While we are confident that the current roster of administrators is solid, we need to be more vigilant and engaged in hiring going forward. We also need to prioritize replacing open critical positions as soon as possible. Second, we will perform a financial best practices audit to ensure this kind of surplus does not occur again. And finally, we have already begun the process of reviewing the current year's budget for other similar possible mistakes. The school committee recognizes that this mistake will cost the district credibility in budget discussions. We are committed to rebuilding that credibility through transparent, considered action, and prompt reporting. We will follow the best practices review in every way possible. We will review the employment of anyone involved in the previous budget that is still employed by the district, and we will do all of this through an open process accessible to everyone that is interested. The next meeting, we will have an agenda item for public comment on this issue, and tonight, as a way of informing the public, we will have a question and answer session between the school committee and the current superintendent and current business manager. Thank you. Now that I've given everybody bad news, the student, the next thing on the agenda is the Student Representatives Report. I believe the student representative is here.
Hello. Hold on, sorry.
Will we give the public a chance to ask questions?
Um, so as everyone knows, we started school last week. The primary school will celebrate DOT Day on September 15th to celebrate creativity, and it's inspired by Peter H. Reynolds' book, DOT. Picture Day will be September 11th and 12th at the primary school, and open house for the primary school is September 18th. At Turkey Hill, Picture Day is September 10th. The Penny Wars are starting soon, and their open house is September 17th. The middle school, their student government will start on September 15th, and their first school dance will be October 3rd. And at the high school, open house will be September 11th, and fall athletics will begin shortly, and those are both for middle and high school.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next thing that's on the agenda is to review and approve minutes. This was a regular session on 8/6/25, and the meeting minutes should be in your folder.
I don't have them in my folder. So I was unable to review them.
Yeah, I don't see them.
Are they not there? If they're not there, we'll just move this off till the next meeting. All right. Appears as though the minutes aren't there, so we will move this off to the next meeting. After that, the next item on the agenda is to review and approve line item transfers and warrants, and for this, I think we're going to have the debut of our new business manager, Chris. I don't want to make this a game show, but come on down.
Welcome.
So we have five line item transfers, or five transfers for tonight.
I think you have to press the button, right? Is it green?
Yeah, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Good. So there's five line, or five transfers for tonight. The first one I'm looking at is the dues, fees slash athletic expenses transfer. And what we're doing is to adjust the account that are in the negative for available balances. So we're going to be moving $174.05 out of the dues fee slash athletic expense account and moving it into the special detail athletic events account, and this zeros out the balance in that account.
Can I ask, can I ask questions now?
Yeah.
Is this the revolving fund, or is this our general?
This is the general fund.
Okay, so we're just moving between lines and the general fund? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
The next one I'm looking at is the, we're moving money out of the business manager's salary account. We're moving $4,900 into school stipends, and that money is used for, to increasing the actual expense by $4,838.76. And we're just moving money in there to have enough money available for that account.
What does school stipends cover?
School stipends covers anything from, stipends for, I believe it's...
Activities?
Activities.
After-school classes?
After-school activities.
Did we go over this year?
We have not yet.
Okay, this is, well, this is for FY '25.
This is for FY '25. These were all for FY '25. I should have made that clear in the beginning, sorry.
Did we go over in FY '25, our budgeted stipend amount?
We...
It appears we did.
So we're, we're going to be zeroing out that account with the transfer. We didn't have enough money in there, and the new revised budget will be $25,357. All we had in the revised budget was $20,457. So we're moving money in to cover...
Yep, no, I get what it...
The school stipends.
Yep. Can I ask?
Sure.
What led to us going over the stipends? Was there a, I think this might be a question for Mr. Santri. Did we have more activities running than we had budgeted for, for FY '25?
That I'll have to look into and get back to you on that. I'm not sure.
My guess, my, and it truly is a guess, why that happened is we didn't account for as many clubs as actually ran to be running, and they are in the contract, so they could run.
Okay, is that, okay.
My understanding is that this is a normal thing, that some of the clubs wax and wane as they go, and in order to make sure that we have every club stipend in the contract covered, we have to sometimes move money around.
Okay, I'm just wondering if this was a waxing year and if this is going to affect this year's budget, FY '26?
I can definitely get you that answer at next meeting.
Okay.
I don't, I'm almost positive, though, we have not overspent on that line item for FY '26, though, as of yet.
Okay, because I, I know club membership is up. It's been rising since COVID, so, okay, thank you, sorry.
No, sorry. The next budget transfer is for the maintenance of buildings. So for this budget transfer, we're moving $53,395.19 out of maintenance of buildings and to cover sewage disposal, electricity charges, and telephone charges for FY '25. Those accounts were negative before the transfer, and with the transfer, we'll be zeroing them out and leaving $34,000 in the electricity charges account.
Okay, so we were over, we, we were over more for electricity, which I know was an issue, and I believe we fixed, fixed, and FY '26 with a higher estimate for electrical.
I believe we upped it by about $25,000 to $30,000 for FY '26.
Okay, all right.
So I think this is an action item, so...
Oh, there's, he's got...
Oh, you've got more?
I have two more.
All right, let's go.
The next one, we're going to be, we found additional accounts that are, that are, will be in the negative, and this is to correct them. I'm looking at, it starts with building maintenance supplies and goes down to primary school custodians, and then we're transferring money out of those accounts into accounts that start with transportation and end with primary school custodians.
Okay, I have questions about the computers purchase and lease, but I think that was, that's not a question you can answer because you started after.
I might be able to answer. I know the numbers...
Why did we choose not to buy the computers, $95,000 worth of computers?
Yeah, I can't answer to that item, but I know that we left 95 on the table in that line item for the year. I believe for FY '26, we decreased that line item just because we transferred so much money into that account that we didn't spend. So going forward, we don't believe we'll be spending as much in that line item account.
Okay, can I ask now about the paraprofessional lines? Why are the paraprofessional lines so over?
So the paraprofessional lines could be due to turnover. I'm not sure. They could be due to turnover, people leaving other jobs, just unfilled positions. I believe it was between all the para positions that we left open, it's about $243,000. So it's a little less than 15% of the surplus.
Chris, could part of the answer be that we budgeted for them both in IDA and in the general fund?
That could be a possibility as well.
Can you break that down just so everybody understands the distinction?
We need to talk about that more and explain what happened.
So our IDA grant is the federal grant we get for special education, and we had about a little over $300,000 in that grant for salaries. We also had several thousands of dollars in unexpended funds in our budget for paras. And the assumption that I was asking Chris about is, did we pay for them out of the grant and not the general fund? So were they budgeted in two places?
It could possibly be us.
And so the IDA grant is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act?
Yes.
And the idea would be, not to make a pun, but the idea would be that we could have paid them out of our budget or out of the grant. And if we would have paid it out of one and not noticed and corrected it, to pay it out of the other, we would have had a surplus there.
Correct.
All of these are, questions are related to the surplus.
Mm-hmm. And about how much, can you say the number again?
It was about $243,000.
Going forward for FY '26, can you explain how paraprofessionals, this is not, was that the total of the paraprofessional salaries, or was that a percent, about 15%?
No, that was a total of the surplus of the line items in the general fund.
What percentage of paras were allocated to the IDA grant?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Oh, we'd have to get back to you with that answer.
Okay, going forward for FY '26, do you know if we are also double allocating?
We are not.
We are not.
All of the salaries have, except for one, have been removed from the IDA grant.
When did that happen? When were those salaries removed? Was it...
When we wrote the grant for FY '26.
Okay, so that, was the FY '26 budget that the school, the school committee set and voted on back in, when did we vote it? It took so long, April? Was that, so that budget does not have the para salaries coming out of the general budget but out of, oh, no.
No.
Does not have para salaries coming out of the IDA grant?
Correct.
Okay, so the, this issue has been fixed?
Yes.
Okay.
And will be carefully monitored throughout the year by forecasting each month.
Okay, so when we talked about the budget for next year, that was already considering this issue being fixed?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
And there's one last line item transfer, Chris?
Yep.
Okay.
So we're moving money out of high school special ed paraprofessionals, and we're going to be moving money into all the below accounts that were showing a negative available balance, starting from salary human resources director all the way to overtime high school custodians.
Some of this includes payouts for people who were leaving in vacation pay. We didn't suddenly give the superintendent a bump her last year so that the...
No.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for anyone looking at it. Okay.
So I just want to make clear for everybody, this is the first time since I've been on school committee that the line item transfers were done in this way, where you could account for every penny, every penny that we had and every penny that we moved. And the way that Chris broke it down on these documents makes it really clear. I don't know if, if this is like standard practice and we just weren't doing it, but this is much better than what we had before, so I want to say thank you very much. Because now, anybody at home could follow along with everything that we've done. So thank you for taking the time to do that, and thank you for answering our questions. I think this is an action item. We have to approve all the line item transfers, so I will be looking for a motion.
Motion to approve the line item transfers as just outlined by Mr. McNamara.
A second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This was...
I can get that exact number for the paraprofessionals if you need it, by the way.
Like you just got it? Oh, you can't.
Yeah, I can get you the exact number, but it's about $243,000.
Okay, I don't need the exact number.
Thank you.
Do we want to just tackle the warrants? Wait.
Oh, we don't.
No.
We just say what the warrant amount was.
All right, so the warrant amount from the period of June 16, 2025 to August 28, 2025 was $1,753,054.41, and we have donations.
We do?
Do we have a donation?
There's none in the folder.
I thought we had one.
We do have one donation.
Yes.
Is it paper?
Yeah, we have a donation on paper.
Oh, we just need to, I think we approved that last meeting.
Oh, is this the, the same one?
Yeah, but they needed all our signatures, I believe.
Oh, okay.
But we can say thank you again.
Yes.
We can.
Thank you to First Financial Trust and the, Kevin, how do you say this gentleman's? Suzick Memorial Scholarship Fund.
We just, we approved it last time, but we need, all of us need to sign.
Yep. Just pass this down. As we're doing that, Dr. Fortuna, the next thing is your first superintendent report. Has anything happened at school?
Uneventful.
On regional news.
Let's see. Happy first day, bye. The start of the school year always brings excitement, anticipation, and possibility. This year, we are guided by the theme of Ohana, the Hawaiian word for family. Ohana reminds us that schools are more than places of learning, they are communities where everyone belongs. It speaks to unity, care, inclusivity, responsibility, and love. As we begin this year together, my commitment is to ensure that every student and family in Lunenburg feels seen, supported, and valued. That spirit will guide our daily work and the decisions we made as a district. Some highlights and celebrations. The first days of school brought energy, optimism, and moments that reminded us of what makes Lunenburg special. Classrooms are filled with enthusiasm, and the Ohana theme is welcomed warmly by staff. The shared focus is helping us start the year with unity and purpose. Community response. So as you know, I was sending out surveys to inform my entry plan. Early survey feedback highlights strong pride in our teachers and in the sense of community that defines our schools. To date, and this is actually 184 as of 6:00 PM tonight, families have already shared their perspectives, giving us valuable insight into what we are doing well and where we can grow. If you are a family and you have not completed the survey, please do, because I am really interesting, interested in hearing your voice. Senior sunrise happened. This is a longstanding tradition that captured the joy and optimism of our students as they began their final year. It was a wonderful reminder of why we do this work, to see our students thrive. And resilience on day one. When an unexpected fire occurred at Lunenburg Middle High School, staff responded calmly and effectively, ensuring that every student was safe. Their teamwork was a living example of our values in action. I also extend gratitude to our first responders for their rapid support. Together, they reinforce the importance of community care and preparedness. And our teaching and learning department, teaching and learning efforts this summer and fall have focused on equipping staff with the resources in professional development needed to support students from day one. We welcome Jennifer Chiverso as our new K-8 literacy coach slash specialist, who is already partnering with teachers as they implement HMH and who reading version three, it's a new version that we purchased for our students this year, and continue Amplify Reading in grades six through eight. This investment strengthens literacy instruction across grade levels. Curriculum materials were inventoried, sorted, and delivered before the first day. It was a Herculean effort because they were delivered late, ensuring that teachers could start strong with students. Our team submitted entitlement and competitive grant applications. Early awards will provide new resources for students and staff more quickly. And to make information more accessible, thanks to the work of Dr. Bookus, we launched new websites for both staff and families. She's done a great job on our staff facing website to take what used to be about an 80-page document to put it in an easy-to-navigate website for our staff. So thank you to Dr. Bookus. Professional development this year will be building and department-based, making it more relevant to day-to-day practice. Sessions are aligned with district goals and the Student Opportunity Act grant. Ongoing collaboration through ILT, PLCs, and leadership teams will ensure that professional learning remains connected to improving student outcomes. School operations. Our schools continue to grow and evolve to meet student needs. Six new instructional staff members joined us this fall, strengthening programs in art, literacy, and that the primary grades. We remain committed to mentoring and supporting all colleagues in their first three years so that they can thrive in our district and in turn, support our students. So I'd like to welcome Amy Monahan to the high school. She is an art teacher. Arabella Sauer, who is over at the primary school teaching kindergarten. Beth Robinson, over at the primary school as our MTSS support in grades K through two. Jen Chiverso, who's our district literacy coach. Amanda Lucy, who is over in the TLC program at the primary. And Kayla Dwyer, who is teaching kindergarten at the primary. This fall, 1,593 students are enrolled across our schools, including nine in the ACE program. The steady enrollment underscores families' trust in our schools and highlights the need to ensure that resources are allocated equitably. Our new business administrator, Christopher McNamara, has begun his work with energy and focus, as you've seen tonight. By reviewing expenditures dating back to FY '22, Chris is developing multi-year projections through FY '29. This will give us a clearer picture of future needs and allow us to plan responsibly. He is improving purchasing practices by requiring PDF quotes for all requisitions in Munis, as soon as we figure out how to do that in Munis, increasing both transparency and efficiency. He is also exploring ways to use Munis more effectively. For those of you that don't know, Munis is our budget software for the schools in the town, aiming to improve budget communication and identify cost savings through best practices and state contracts. These steps will strengthen our financial systems and help ensure that every dollar is used to support students directly. The summer was exceptionally busy for our facilities and maintenance teams, who worked tirelessly to prepare schools for opening. We completed fire alarm upgrades at Turkey Hill. I think we're very happy that those are done. No one is drilling in our ceilings anymore. We have nearly finished security upgrades at Turkey Hill with final parts arriving soon. We added parking and office improvements at Central Office following its move to Turkey Hill. We installed new doors and hardware at Turkey Hill for improved safety and appearance. We replaced freezer mechanicals at Turkey Hill to ensure food service reliability. We finished the HVAC upgrades at the primary school on schedule, providing comfort for students and staff. We installed new cameras, a grease trap, and a dishwasher, and a table at the primary We installed new cameras, a grease trap, and a dishwasher and a table at the primary school. And we created a kitchenette for the ACE program to better serve students. These projects not only upgraded our infrastructure, but also directly improved the safety, accessibility, and daily experiences of our students and staff. I extend my gratitude to our facility staff and administrators for their dedication. Our extended school year program ran successfully this summer, providing opportunities for students who benefit from additional learning opportunities. Juliana Hansam represented Lunenburg in federal-level advocacy in Washington DC, ensuring our district's voice was included in national discussions about special education funding and staffing. We received DESI approval for our 240, 262 federal grants, that's the earlier Individuals with Education Act that we were discussing, as well as some Title III funding to support English learners. We did that as a part of a collaborative. Staffing remains a focus with active recruitment for a team chair, an occupational therapist, and paraprofessionals. Filling these roles is critical to meeting the needs of our students. And then looking forward, several initiatives will shape our direction and entry plan. Surveys and listening sessions are underway. Early themes include pride in our teachers, concerns about turnover, and the importance of equitable opportunities. Later this year, we will launch a community-driven process to guide growth in the years ahead. My entry report will provide the foundation for this work, and we will continue embedding the values of Ohana into everyday practice across all schools. For community engagement, engaging families, staff, and students remains central to our work. To date, we have received 400 student, 184, and 67 staff responses to surveys, which is an outstanding survey response rate. The 402 students are all at the middle high school. Our weekly staff updates and now monthly edition of Aloha will continue to share good news, upcoming events, and important district information. These communications are designed to keep our community informed and connected. As we look ahead, our path is clear. We will build on Lunenburg's strong foundation of community and staff dedication, while ensuring that every student experiences belonging, opportunity, and fairness across all schools. Guided by the spirit of Ohana, welcoming all, lifting each other, learning with purpose, and leading with heart, we are laying the foundation for a strong and united year. Thank you.
Dr. Fortuna, can I ask you one question?
You may.
Does the front door have a functional key entered you?
Yes, sir.
Yes. All right.
Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
First of all, thank you for the Turkey Hill door. I know that was a big effort and that was a big push. A lot of stuff got done, maintenance-wise, that had not been getting done. The summer was a lot. I also want to say thank you to the district office staff who moved from TC Passios to Turkey Hill while Turkey Hill was being worked on in multiple areas. So I'd like to appreciate our central office staff for spending their summer reassembling the office and working under difficult conditions. So thank you to the district staff. Can I ask a few questions?
Of course.
So I wanted to talk about the fire response timeline and say, first of all, I do appreciate the communication with parents. I know it was, as a parent, I was getting irritated, like, why haven't you sent out an email? And then Liz said, because we are dealing with the emergency and we are making sure all the students and staff are safe. So I want to, it made me instantly feel better that that is where everyone's priority was. And I would like to commend our staff for how they responded. I'd like it if we could commend the maintenance person who found the fire on the roof and reported it. And that is, it stayed small and no one was hurt, and that is amazing. So if we, as a school committee, could do something to recognize them, I think that would be nice. I do think that in the future, we do have the phone network, and it would have been nice if phone calls had gone out to parents because some of the kids had their cell phones on them and there was a lot of texting, parents, the school is burning down, and then not responding to texts.
Yeah.
Which, I don't know how to combat that, like, please don't do that to us children. It's just mean.
It just happens. It's gonna happen more.
So there was a little bit of delay, and I know a lot of people were getting their news from Facebook, which is never ideal or what we want to do. And that, we were emailed about the buses, but parents weren't called to say, your kids are coming home, which panicked me at first until I remembered they're high schoolers and middle schoolers and they're responsible, and the bus drivers were great too about making sure-
Bus drivers were amazing.
Yeah, and I do want to say thank you to the bus company for getting the buses there. I know, the buses got, the buses got there quickly too. But maybe in the, do we have a communication person in charge of, and not Liz, because Liz is the one who's also dealing with the emergency, but is there another person in central office that we have appointed to be the communication person for parents?
There is not. So I was at the scene, making sure the students were safe and cellphone in hand, calling back to Liz, trying to get accurate messaging out to families as quickly as possible.
What if we worked on that in the policy subcommittee? We had a person who was just the designated emergency communications person.
We could definitely do that. Yeah, it occurred to me that Liz is probably the most likely, but she is dealing with the immediate emergency and helping assist to make sure students are safe. So someone else is being, even just a simple quick message, the school's on fire, everyone's okay. Yeah. Would have been great.
How about the other way around?
Yeah. That is, that is how you called. I knew it was, I knew it wasn't great when you started with, everyone's okay.
I started every call to every single person the same way. Everybody's okay, but-
So, and then I do like that later we sent out the email to all parents because I know there were parents at the primary in Turkey Hill who were concerned because all they heard on Facebook was the school was on fire, and they didn't know which school. So I think we did good with the communication, and I'm not, I don't want to pick it apart because the school was on fire.
I'd also like to put a plug in for families to sign up for the Safer Watch app. That was actually what we got our first message out on very quickly. So I-
I got it.
Did you get it?
I did. That's, that's when I first- I'm gonna have to sign up. Yeah, I signed up and I got it.
Yep. Directions for getting hooked up with it are on our website.
Okay. Can I talk about this new K-8 literacy coach specialist position? Was that in the budget for FY26? Because it was my impression that that position had been eliminated, and I was surprised to see we hired someone to do that job.
We funded it through our Student Opportunity Act grant. So it's a grant-funded position.
Okay. Because this is the first that I, and I think the school committee is hearing that this position was restored after a difficult budget season. So I'm surprised to see it back. Were there other positions that were added in the district? I know we have six new staff members. Which of these six are positions that are new?
None of them are new.
Well, to the budget. Had been eliminated?
Nope.
In the budget? Okay.
No.
Just replacing the kindergarten teachers. Yeah. All right, so it was just the district literacy coach was added back in? Okay.
Because it aligned with our goals in the Student Opportunity Act grant, which was a requirement of the grant.
Is that a new grant or additional money that we were not counting on when we set the budget in FY26? Did more money come through?
Yes, so, we had been awarded the Student Opportunity Act grant prior, so it was a three-year grant. And it wasn't until late, after, actually, the school year got out, that the state extended the Student Opportunity Act grant funding for one more year, but we had to apply for it. So it was a competitive grant. Out of 21 applications, we were one of 10 districts who received the extension. And so, of course, then it had to align with our previous grant that was written three years ago, which had constraints around it, but it did align with the reading piece, so we were able to hire the literacy coach back.
How many years does the grant-
It's a one-year grant.
Okay.
One year.
I'll take what I can get.
Yeah.
And then we'll take the next year as it comes. Okay, I was just, I was surprised to see that back on the list after, it was a difficult budget season and there were difficult decisions, so I was surprised to see it back on the list. What other positions could be covered by that grant if we got it again? Is that the only option?
My understanding is that it's going to be the end of the cycle of that Student Opportunity Act. I don't believe it's going to come forward again. If it, if money ever did come to the state and they could reissue that grant, it would probably start from the beginning with new goals that then the district could decide what their new priorities are and their new goals were.
Okay. Would that grant cover paraprofessionals?
It has stipends in it. Again, it would have to align with what your goals are, so I believe it could cover some paraprofessionals. Again, I don't know if it's going to become available again, this was the end of the cycle.
During the budget process, we prioritized other things over this position? And to have it added back in-
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't align with the previous three-year goals, which was to close the gap around literacy. And so having someone who can support the tier-one instruction was what that priority, what that grant was written for. So special ed, paraprofessionals probably would not have been able to be funded through that, through that grant.
The MTSS professionals? Because there were, did we end up cutting all the-
We still have one. That was under Title I, and we have the half at Turkey Hill, so we still have the specialists.
Would the Student Opportunity Grant cover MTSS professionals, the ones that were let go?
Well, so that was a coach, that was one of the MTSS professionals, was the literacy coach. In an MTSS system, you have coaches and specialists and classroom teachers.
Yep, and we prioritized MTSS over the literacy coach? So was-
Again, MTSS-
I think what she's saying is that the literacy coach is part of the MTSS program.
Absolutely. It's, tier-one instruction is the foundation of MTSS instruction.
So does the literacy coach work individually with students?
The literacy coaches work with teachers to help them implement good practices in the classroom. They don't work one-on-one with students. Sometimes they model small group instruction so the teacher can see how to take a small group and work with small group in the classroom.
Can I just maybe ask a summative question?
Sure.
Is there anything that would have qualified for this grant money that ranked as a higher priority when we were cutting things?
The school committee's higher priorities.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Again, it had to fit a very tight narrative that, for a grant that was written three years ago, around literacy instruction, specifically around literacy instruction.
Okay. And I also wanted to talk about recommendations for changes to policy to tighten up our finances, but I think that's a, we'll do that later. Okay, that's all my questions about it.
Thank you, Dr. Bookus. The next thing on the agenda is new business, and it's an action item, and it's the appointment of a school committee representative to the Building Redesign Committee.
I have no idea.
I thought this was you, and then I learned it was not you, and then I thought it was Emily, and it was not Emily.
Please tell me what the Building Redesign Committee is.
So I am on the municipal building design committee already. If there's a building redesign committee, I don't know about it, and your dad didn't email me.
I know that we received an email that I forwarded to-
And I'm happy to serve on a building redesign committee, but I would like to know which building we're redesigning? Or else things are gonna get real weird.
One of the members of our select board is, is in the audience and she might, there's just one committee.
Okay, so who-
Was the same?
It's just the same.
The municipal? Oh, so that's Laura. Okay, yeah, I'm already on that.
Okay.
Weird. Are you trying to kick me off?
I just wanted somebody, I received multiple emails from a very polite person who is running it, and I said, I thought it was you, and then that was not what-
I've had two meetings with him.
I just did as I told. This is like how it works at my house, this is how it works at the school committee, I'm just doing as I'm told. Okay.
We can check that one off.
So I will email Mr. Blatt.
That was easy. We've had two meetings. I'm really, I was so worried, I'm like, did I miss when they've suddenly decided, like, all right, we're only doing this building, redesign it, go. But it's Municipal Building Design Committee and it's the same, did you change the charter at all?
It used to be called Building Reuse Committee.
That was a what? We've been doing this, the-
All right, so I am emailing Mr. Blatt to let him know that you are appointed representative and that you have already met with him twice.
It was a Zoom meeting. I'm not very memorable, I guess. Well, good job, you can check that off.
See, that was less than three minutes. The next item on the agenda is the budget timeline. With the recognition that the announcement today of the budget surplus will probably have impacts on the budget timeline, so. I am trying to find our document. Is this year-to-date budget report, is that what you want us to look at?
No, that outlines the surplus.
Okay.
This is FY25.
Yeah, let me throw the FY27 one in there.
You mean Chris hasn't come up with a budget in the days he's been on the job?
Oh, wait, until you see what Chris and I have come up with for you.
You've done it, how many days has it been, Chris? How many days have you been on the-
Are we counting the fire day?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that one counts twice, that was the second day on the job. All right, so you've done all this in six days, five days?
Where are we at? Budget time, budget-
I just put an FY27 budget development timeline in our folder.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, it's new, okay.
When you were in Hudson, does this mirror-
Yes.
The timeline that you did there? Okay, so this isn't insanely ambitious?
No, no, and Chris feels that it's realistic and some of it just needs to be done because we have the October 14th presentation to the tri-board, so we have to really start hitting the ground. So for our first movement, the first thing we're going to do is do a budget kickoff with principals and department heads between September 9th and 13th. And we're going to talk about, Chris has been working on the assumptions with grants, offsets, benefits, contracts. He's familiarized himself with that. And then we'll talk about a template there. On September 19th, we, this date is a little flexible because we're not sure when TMS is going to have our end-of-the-year report finished. We're waiting.
What's TMS?
Oh, the Management Solutions, they're the people that we had in the interim-
Okay.
Until we hired Chris.
Okay, thank you.
So we allowed for some overlap.
Yep.
So then on October 3rd, we should have our October 1st snapshot of where we are and be able to look at what we'll need for sectioning and enrollment and our students with special needs caseloads at that point. And then on October 14th is our overview to town government. We'll share our preliminary assumptions, our drivers and pressures, and we'll highlight the alignment with Lunenburg priorities at that time. On October 17th, our school submissions will be due and we'll be working on a level service and any new requests that they have. We're only going to present three budgets to the town this year. I think part of what happened that we're discovering this year is with, I think it was nine budgets that ultimately got completed, is there was confusion about which sheet you were looking at, which budget we were using, and we're starting to discover that things were transposed and missed and we're really working to sort out FY26 right now as well.
Can you describe what the three budgets will be?
There'll be a level service budget, a-
Town manager.
A town manager budget.
And restored services.
And then a restored services budget.
Okay.
And the restored services will be, once you and this team have surveyed last year's budget and decide- and decided what are certain services that should be restored?
Okay. It's frustrating that the highest tier is going back to where we were. That that is the biggest ask. I just, we, I don't think we are in a position to ask for more.
No.
But that is a little sad.
If we made bombs or stealth jets, we could ask for more. But we educate children and.
We have very intelligent kids and just.
We do.
You were talking about revenue sources. Okay, thank you. She's got more.
Oh, sorry.
There's way, there's more.
Oh, I know.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
October twentieth through thirty-first, we'll do, Chris and I will do a central review. We'll consolidate, we'll scrub lines, we'll do a gap analysis versus our projected revenue at that point. And then Thursday, November sixth, um, mark this on your calendars, people in the audience. Thursday, November sixth is going to be a leadership workshop. So that's going to be kind of our first war room where we really look at the scenarios and where we are with any reductions that we have to make in case we end up with a level-funded budget. November tenth through twenty-first, we'll have budget conferences with each school department. So Chris and I and the principals will work with their schools and their leadership teams to discuss where we are with the budget building. This is a piece of information that teachers have really asked for. They want their opinions heard in the budget process. They're the ones closest to the work. It should be heard. So um, we've built that into the schedule. On Wednesday, December third, the working draft will be completed. On December eleventh, um, I'd like to be able to do a community budget forum where we can listen to the community about needs um, and log their feedback about the budget. On December sixteenth, um, I'd like to do a budget workshop with us to, with assumptions, drivers, and early gaps so that you can give me direction about where to go. On January fifth, um, we're gonna finalize draft two. On January fourteenth, we're going to publish the superintendent's recommended budget. That's the date that was already scheduled on our calendar for this. Wednesday, January twenty-first, um, which is the following week, well, that's the due date. The school committee's first reading of the superintendent's recommended budget. Lead January, we'll update again after we hear about chapter seventy-eight and what's happening at the state level. We'll have another public hearing on the school budget once it's um, completed. We'll do um, a community Q and A, we'll do revisions. And then we'll have, we'll have another budget workshop. Well, on Mar- on March fourth, on March eleventh, we'll post the final budget. And on March eighteenth will be the final school committee vote on the budget, which is in line with where it was last year.
Can you remind me, after that is when the presentation to the finance committee happens? Or is that before that? Maybe Tony can speak.
Yeah. I'm not sure how this town does it.
I don't, I don't remember, quite frankly.
Is it after the, after the committee votes on it or?
It is after we vote, but it is before the, obviously before the town meeting.
Before town meeting. That part might need to change a little.
Let me email Chris and see when he wants it to be done.
It just should be considered, I mean, as, as this goes forward.
I don't think they've set their calendar yet.
So it is a very ambitious timeline.
Yes.
However, we do have the business manager, the business administrator that is up to it. And he didn't turn and run when I proposed it, so that was good.
Can I, can I ask about, I know we're talking about FY twenty-seven in this. I had some questions for you about FY twenty-six, I know. And it's gonna be ambitious to deal with FY twenty-six while you're dealing with FY twenty-seven. But I just wanted to see if we could touch base a little bit on the fact, I know Selectmen's go- um, Selectmen Leightonin had mentioned at one of the last meetings that there was some extra chapter seventy money that had been allocated through the chapter seventy process in the spring. And last year, the, the select board was nice enough to help us or we should ask to put it on the warrant for the fall town meeting. It is four hundred thousand dollars that I think the schools could use. So, and that's a little aside from this, but I think that kind of comes before this in some ways.
The town manager and I are scheduling a meeting for next week to discuss that very thing.
Excellent.
I just emailed uh, the chairman of the finance committee about the March sixteenth date. So if it's good, well, he'll let us know. If it's not good, he'll let us know. And if he doesn't have a date yet, I just ask him to keep our date in mind.
Great.
So hopefully that'll work.
Thank you.
So given the situation with last year's budget, will the FY twenty-five? I think it would be good for us to, to consider how we're gonna make sure this doesn't happen again in FY twenty-six. I know Tony spoke about it, I was really upset today. I am also a member of the PTO. I've been getting a lot of requests from teachers and one of the leadership of our PTO for funding for things they need in their classrooms. So it was incredibly frustrating to me that we gave all that money back to the town, including we didn't buy computers with it, we didn't buy a lot of things with it. So um, that's frustrating, but I'm a looking-forward kind of person. And we have new leadership, so I, I'd like to hear from you what you think. It appears you'll just be going through the line items from this year, kind of seeing where our projections are. You know, it, it is, there's a lot of people in town who've done a lot of work to try to get more state funding, including more special ed circuit breaker money, the extra chapter seventy money. So I would just wanna make sure, while I also wanna be prepared for twenty-seven, I don't want us to squander the opportunity to spend twenty-six money that we have, whether it can even not be, I mean, obviously staffing is number one in my book, but um, even if there are things we can help pad against the future, I, I think you would agree, we wanna make sure that we are really clear on what our goals are.
Yeah, I think having Chris in his role is going to provide much tighter oversight to what's happening in FY twenty-six.
Okay.
And one of the things that he has suggested doing is a monthly forecast of where we are with spending. And what we'd like to do, as you're the governing body for budget, is at one meeting a month, present that to you. So you're also aware and the public is aware of where we are with our spending. My goal is to be as transparent as possible, as frequently as possible. The citizens really support our schools. And they deserve that level of transparency. And quite frankly, they deserve better than us giving half a million dollars back that we made a strong case for, that we could have used.
Yeah, a hundred percent. And, and I wanna say that there's a lot of people in town who've worked really hard, including our leadership in town, who have been very open to the needs of the schools in difficult budget years, which I personally appreciate and I know my children appreciate. And I hope that we can continue moving forward as a team. I think that the town manager has put together a process where we're meeting collaboratively, you know, with the finance committee and with the select board to really talk about our budget. Because, you know, our schools are so important. And there's also lots of other things in town that are really important and deserve to be funded well. So um, so thank you. And I'm sure we'll keep talking about this.
Yes.
Moving forward.
So does, I'm trying to choose my words carefully. Does the financial management of the FY twenty-five budget and what happened affect how the FY twenty-six budget was built? And do we need to go back and review this year's budget? Because cuts were made expecting things to be like the year before. And staff was cut. Like, we lost teachers that were, we, we lost staff that were extremely talented, who have gone on to get other jobs. And we're not gonna get them back. We hurt morale. We made teachers and admin extremely stressed about their jobs. Wasn't really fun being on the school committee either, I imagine. So it's making me question the entire FY twenty-six process and what was allocated. Do we need to go back and look at the FY twenty-six budget? I guess what I'm asking is, are we gonna be half a million over again this year on spent? Or is that money allocated?
Right now, it looks as if that money is allocated. We're going through the budget line by line with what's in Munis, the budget that we submitted and the expanded budget, which is one that we've been working on, um, working from, not on. We wanna make sure that those numbers are tight, so we're doing that work right now. My goal is to reduce even from prior years the amount that we're giving back to the town because it's usually, as Tony was correct, in that one hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand range. And I don't think we can honestly look at the community and say, we need this money if we're returning two positions every, every year.
Yeah. Yeah. It's difficult to have gone through the FY twenty-six process. It's difficult to look at the band parents in the center of town with a bucket collecting money with a voluntary toll booth because we cut their budget and then to see that we gave money back. And I don't know what would irritate me more, knowing we suddenly have had, this year had half a million more we didn't count on, and we let people go we didn't need to let go. Or not suddenly having that money. But I am concerned about FY twenty-six.
I just wanna say one thing. I think that we did not correctly budget money. But I also wanna be cautious about trying to cut it to the bone.
Right.
Because we need to have a surplus. We do not have a rainy day fund. We do not have borrowing capacity independent of the town. And so if we were to incur some major expenditure, like for example, Laura, you and I have been on school committee. Every time we've come here, we have been under the threat that something was gonna happen with Turkey Hill's aged systems that cannot be replaced. The roof, what was the?
The boiler.
The boiler. Yeah, so like, if one of those things goes and we've.
Just list and stuff.
We've cut it to the bone, then I, I'm concerned. So like, I don't wanna over-correct and like, you know, have our budget like, two thousand dollars excess. That's just too tight. So I don't know where the, the balance is. And I think that one of the things that we committed to doing was having this best practices audit that the town manager suggested. And I think it would be really helpful for them to say to us, the town this size, with a district this size, with this much money, you should have this much surplus as essentially a rainy day fund when you're not allowed to have by statute, a rainy day fund. And if we could have one, that would be really helpful.
If we had a special education circuit breaker, which I have been harping on for almost a year now, if we had a special education circuit breaker fund, would we have been able to put the excess money into that fund?
No, cause circuit breaker is income.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, a, a reserve fund for special, um, out of, sorry. Out of district placement reserve fund, which I've been at, I've been kinda advocating for, but I'm not sure, we're gonna have to work with the town if we're gonna set that up. But would we have been able to put this money into an out-of-district placement reserve fund?
If we had worked with the town to hold that money in reserve and it would have to go through the town meeting process um, in order to create that account? We can't hold money across fiscal years.
No, but if, if we had set it up, would that have been, would we have been able to put that money into, into that fund?
By a statute, it has to go back to the town and then the town has to decide what to do with it.
And I, I do think, just so everybody at home is aware, Laura, myself, other members of the school committee, other members of FinCon, members of the select board, we have talked about the idea of having this uh, reserve fund for, for.
Stabilization fund, I assume.
Yeah, stabilization fund for new out-of-district placements that move into town. Because they're the biggest shock to our budget. I mean, like, quite frankly, the five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars that we have could be wiped out any minute by a single person moving into town. And so it's like, we know.
We don't have it anymore.
Yeah, we know that those shocks happen. We had them happen last year. We had one happen two years before that. And so like, I do think that it, it is a good way to highlight, you know, if we had, like, if there was a mechanism that whenever we remit money to the town, it goes into the stabilization fund. It's the property of the town, but we can use it when we have uh, move-ins that are out-of-district placements. That would just be an easy way to like, clean the books and give us a little bit of flexibility, but still comply with the statutory requirements.
Which would also let us carry a little more wiggle room, like you said, instead of trying to cut it.
Right, we would not have to cut it to the bone.
But would we have to approve, would it have to go to town meeting each time?
It does have to go to town meeting.
Each time?
Yes. Each time?
To put money into a stabilization fund?
Yeah, cause we can't hold money over fiscal years.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think if we, if we explain.
I mean, it could be part of the, the regular town budgeting pro, like, you know, process.
So that we should talk about this at the tri-board meeting. Because I have a lot of questions the finance committee can ask. And look, thanks to.
Yes.
The select board and the finance committee, we are meeting together, so that is good.
That's excellent.
But like, I think that like, this is an ideal place to say, this happened, wasn't great, here's what we could do moving forward. And oh, by the way, if we implement this like, sort of like sweeping process where the surplus automatically goes here, or is held pending town meeting vote, and then goes to the stabilization fund, that would provide us with a lot more consistency from year to year. Because, you know, the, the, the amount of money that new out-of-district placements cost ranged, I mean, Emily, you know this better than anybody. They range tremendously. I mean, some of them are seven-figure placements.
Yeah, it's pretty expensive.
So like, if we had something that would guard against us getting destroyed by, you know, just somebody, and literally somebody could move three hundred and fifty feet across the town line, and now we have a million-dollar hole in our budget.
Do you have experience with special, uh, out-of-district placement stabilization?
No, but I do know um, some communities that have explored it. I'm not sure where they ended up. I can research that.
Okay, I have it in my notes, uh, one of the conferences I was at. But quite a few communities are moving towards that. But I'm loath to ask any more of you two right now. Because there's a lot on your plate, six days you've been here. But I do think a stabilization fund would be good.
Do you?
Oh, sorry, go.
No, I was gonna ask, do you expect the best practices audit? Was that something that then would, a, a report would come to us?
Yes.
About that? And it would be a, like, an outside firm or something would?
Yes. Will that also audit the FY twenty-six budget to make sure?
No, I think that it's more like a, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding of this is like, looking at the way we're doing our finances.
Yes.
From an outside perspective, right? Giving us thoughts on maybe ways that we could do better. More checks and balances, better projections, all those kind of things. Although, we, you know, we have new staff, it doesn't, in my opinion, it doesn't hurt to have another set of eyes as well, just to kind of, while we're building a new system.
Yeah, I wanna be clear that I welcome an independent set of eyes.
Yeah.
To look at where we are.
I want, I, I would like an audit as well. Like, I, the best practices, absolutely, but I would like a deeper audit look because this is a lot to ask of just Chris, who is also trying to learn this, the district. And I think that would help in restoring public trust if we had an outside firm also dig into FY twenty-five and look at FY twenty-six and what we're budgeting. Cause this cannot happen again. And I am confi-, I'm not saying I'm not confident in you and I'm not confident in Chris because I am very confident and uh, this budget timeline goes a long way to restoring confidence. But I would very much like an audit of what happened because this should not have happened. I don't like surprises.
So moving forward, if we're looking at it monthly, we should have a better sense if we have, if we have accounts that are over, um, are budgeted higher or the other way, because we've also had surprises the other way, that are under audited. because we've also had surprises the other way, that are under audited, I mean, under allocated. So a monthly update would, I do appreciate that, and I think that's something we should, you know, definitely, it sounds like you're committed to it, but I just want to, you know, say yes, that that is something I think is important. As a committee, I think we need to make sure that, and I, I know the superintendent agrees with this, and I'm sure Chris will, you know, we want to prove to the town that we are, um, you know, committed to making sure that all these numbers are right, because we have asked a lot in the last few years, and we may, we may need more. I mean, you know, that's, that's not a exaggeration, so, um, that's really important.
So just so everybody's aware, while we were talking, I'm drafting an email to the people on the other school, or on the other boards, Chris Benard, Susan Nizzolo, um, trying to get the out-of-district placement stabilization fund on the next agenda for the.
Tribe.
Next tri-board meeting.
Okay.
With the idea that it would be funded from annual remittances from school surplusage. And that way, we would be funding it ourselves. The town wouldn't have to put any money in.
Well, it's their money.
It's, it's their money, but.
We, we've identified.
They've already allotted the money to us. And we, yeah. It would not be a separate expenditure by the town. And that way, you know, we would have, we would have the money. The town would not have to have a separate expenditure, and we would be able to comply with the law. So I'm going to send that email.
But.
Over to the other people.
I would also like to look at the revolving accounts, because they have been a black hole. We don't get, I would like to start getting accountings of the revolving accounts, which I know is difficult, because it is a revolving account, it holds money, the money goes out, and it's not as clear-cut. But I would very much think we need to start looking at the revolving accounts as well, uh, which I understand adds more work onto the pile. Um, and I'm not sure how the rest of the committee feels about a deep dive forensically into the budget, um, but I would encourage that with what we're asking a firm to do. I agree best practices, but I also, I want to know that the numbers we were submitting to Desi are correct. I want to know that there aren't more surprises lurking. I have faith in Chris in finding things, but I just, I think it would go a long way to restoring trust.
Agree. Um, technically, that's not an action item. Can we put that on the, do we want to take a vote? Can we do that?
So I just want to be clear about what we're voting on. So we're voting that we would hire someone with town, with school budget money to assist.
Not school budget money anymore.
Well, we have to pay for it somehow.
We'd have to pay for FY twenty-six.
Right, which is fine. I just want to make sure I'm clear about what, you know, so we would take FY twenty-six funding out of this year's budget to pay for a forensic accounting analysis. Is that what you're?
I, I think that the town manager phrased it as a best practices.
So the best practices, I'm totally on board with.
I don't, I don't care what we call it, as long as we get what we need out of it.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we'd actually get more out of a best practices audit, because I think we're where we're at because of an abundance of poor practice and turnover and not having, uh, significant enough eye on what was happening, um, like we'll have with Chris. So I think it's actually more of a process than, uh, money problem.
Okay. Uh, what is the timeline on something like this?
I want to get it done before town meeting.
November town meeting?
Yes.
We'd have to do an RFP for it, so it's going to take some time.
Yeah, but we got to get it done before town meeting. Otherwise, when we go to town meeting, we ask for money, no one's going to take us seriously.
I don't want to rush it. I mean, I, I just, what is the, what is?
I mean, I think.
How long does something like that take, I think, is the question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Generally, it would be in the proposals. I've never done a best practices audit.
I was going to say, none of us are accountants.
The last audit that I've been a part of took several months.
Yeah, like, two months was the one that took from my, the other board that I'm on.
So you had mentioned asking the town if we could fund it from the surplus money returned instead of out of the FY twenty-six, because I don't know where it's going to come out of FY twenty-six. And.
Yeah, it'll just.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? Instead of making an action item on an agenda item that we don't have, why don't we get the details from the town? I'll, I'll work to get the details from the town manager between now and next week. Jody and I will confer on those, and then we'll put it on as an action item for next week with, uh, language for the RFP drafted and ready to go.
Yeah.
So that if we vote on it next, next time.
Two weeks, yeah.
We will be ready to go.
And you'll see if the town manager is maybe amenable to taking some of that five hundred and eighty-two thousand that is being returned to the town and using that to figure out why we return five hundred and eighty-two thousand to town.
We'll ask very nicely.
We're going to have to ask very nicely with, because, mm. Okay.
All right, um, I think that finishes our discussion of budget timeline. Uh, do we want to vote to approve the budget timeline?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the proposed budget timeline with the one caveat that it may be edited on the March sixteenth date after conferring with FinCon.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next item is a, uh, back-to-school update. This is just a discussion.
We have the A-team here to deliver it. All right, raise your hand.
I just want to know who's BA Verakis.
Raise your hand if your school did not catch on fire.
Yo.
Welcome back, guys.
Yeah.
Welcome back. We have some positive news. So we've had an exciting and joyful start to the new school year at the primary, uh, marked by several firsts and many smiling faces. So this year, we have welcomed back three hundred and ninety-four students through our doors. That does not include the ELC students that we welcome every day as well. So on August twenty-sixth, we warmly welcomed our first and second graders. Shortly, uh, after on the second, we welcomed kindergarten, preschool, and ELC. And then today, we welcomed our second group of preschool students. Yesterday, we had the pleasure of having Hank, as well as Officer McNamara and Officer Monroe in our building greeting students. So the first few weeks have been filled with laughter, learning, establishing routines that have set the foundation for a successful school year ahead. There has been many unmistakable energy in the building as students reconnected with friends, former, formed new relationships, and begin building bonds with their teachers. This year, as Dr. Fortuna has talked about, we are working on the One Ohana. So it's a family that supports, respects, and up, uplifts each other. With that, we got to work with our fire department today and had our first fire drill where our building was not on fire. And everyone successfully got out. We do have a lot of new staff in our building. One staff that was not mentioned with, by Dr. Fortuna was our evening custodian. We have a full-time evening custodian, Daniel Johnson. Additionally, we've had some moves within the building. So we welcome Derek Gaimond, who was the physical education teacher at the high school and is now the physical education teacher shared between Turkey Hill and primary. We have Ms. Thompson, who was a paraprofessional at Turkey Hill and has joined us. And Ms. Smith, who is a paraprofessional at, through the ACE program, is now in our building. So looking ahead, we're excited. We have several upcoming things. We have picture day. We have DOT Day, which is a celebration of creativity, courage, and collaboration through, um, the book by Peter Reynolds, The DOT. So we will have our first community meeting as a school. September eighteenth is open house. Stay tuned, because we will do the rotating schedule. It's five to seven. So these events all provide a wonderful opportunity to strengthen connections between home and school. And as we move forward, our focus remains on nurturing a safe, inclusive, and joyful learning environment. Together as One Ohana, we look forward to a year of growth, discovery, and celebration.
Can I ask you a question? Are you still doing the student announcement every day?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Are you bringing back lunch with the principal?
Yes.
That was a question from a seven-year-old. Who asked me at, at bedtime the other night.
During our first community meeting. They will get to find out what number is chosen and who's coming down to have.
Highlight of his year.
We have a little picnic.
You are a very exciting lunch date.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here to tell you that our opening at Turkey Hill Elementary School has been the best opening I have seen in forty years in education. It was amazing first day and a great first few, uh, first two weeks. Over the summer, we had central office, Project ACE, the morning extended day, all moved into Turkey Hill Elementary School. We are, as of this moment, coexisting nicely. And I expect that that will continue. We've been working together very well. As, as some of you had mentioned, I want to give a special thanks and note to our custodial maintenance team, Jimmy Gentalia, Paul Redding, Scott Holland, Norm Cormier, Tim McKenna, Ryan Ledger, and Chris Stevens for working in, around, through, literally under, all kinds of tradespeople this summer. We had four doors replaced, the two main front doors, the door on the side of the gym that was ready to fall off, and the door in the maintenance hallway. They now open and close correctly and securely. And they even painted them brown to match the rest of the doors. Uh, our fire alarm system was replaced and tested this morning with our first fire drill. Uh, we all exited the building calmly and quietly in an efficient manner and got back in, uh, the same way. Our security system was also updated over the summer. So we had cameras renewed and replaced, additional swipe card entrances added so that teachers can get in more than one doorway without the, the need of a key. We are waiting on one last part of that system that will allow us to actually make the key cards and make the key card section functional. I guess sometimes parts are on backorder. We're hoping that gets done as soon as possible. But door locks, Mrs. McAllister or anybody in the office can unlock the door remotely from the desk, so we can see who's there and who's not there, so we're in good shape. We lost some students, uh, through transfer over the summer. Uh, we lost eight third graders, two fourth graders, and seven fifth graders. Um, and we're wishing them well wherever they ended up. Uh, and we had one paraprofessional resign due to another opportunity, and that position was filled with a transfer from the high school. So we are at, uh, at staff. Over the summer, we also had transfers in. We gained six third graders, nine fourth graders, and five fifth graders. They're all fitting in well and been welcomed by the teachers and their classmates. So we started this school year with three hundred and fifty-seven students. Hundred and thirteen in third grade with an average class size of twenty-three, twenty-four. A hundred and thirty-five students in fourth grade with an average class size of twenty-seven. And a hundred and nine students in fifth grade with an average class size of twenty-two or twenty-three. I was able to visit the middle school last Thursday for, uh, sixth grade lunch to check on my students that moved up. It was thrilling to see them, and they certainly looked grown in a good way and very comfortable and ready to rock the school year. And so I, I feel good knowing that they were prepared well to move on, and I also feel good knowing that Mr. Santry and his team are certainly going to take good care of them. So I want to thank our faculty, our staffs, our students, and our families for the best start ever. It's, I'm looking forward to a wonderful school year.
Thank you.
It's a horrible noise going to happen.
Yeah. What's going on there?
Do you want me to stand up then?
Whatever you want.
After the first week you had, you can do whatever you want.
Oh, there we go. All right, good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. So I think I can tell you, you can ask any student or staff member, six through twelve, that the first day of school was not boring. So. Do you want me to stand up there?
Yeah.
Whatever you want.
Yeah, so they can hear you at home. Sorry, so they can hear you at home.
So, can you hear me now? So we had a small fire on our roof, as we all know, and, um, we evacuated eight hundred and thirty-four students and a hundred and thirty staff members and had accountability within ten minutes. The whole process from the time when I pulled the fire alarm to when the last student either was picked up by a parent or put on a bus was about an hour and thirteen minutes. You know, I know parents get frustrated when we can't communicate out immediately, but, um, we weren't allowed back in the building. We were managing this from our cell phones. We were ensuring that students that had been in our building for two and a half hours were where they were supposed to be, knew what bus they needed to get on. Where are our medically fragile students? Where are, you know, there was just so much to manage at that time. We needed to manage the crisis, and then we needed to report out. And I just want to let you know that Dr. Fortuna, in between the eight hundred and twenty students and fire and the police department, was there with a police radio, managing the situation, calling in our bus company. Thank you so much. Uh, I really think, I just want to thank Dr. Fortuna, our staff, our students, so level-headed and calm and collected as we exited the building. And, um, yeah, it was, it was just something to see. First day, we wouldn't have even done a drill during a lunch. We had, it was during a lunchtime, because you have difficulty having accountability. Middle school was transitioning. Sixth grade was going to see their third teacher at the time, so they haven't even met or taken attendance with the new students in the building. Sixth graders rocked it. I talked to them, they, they were unbelievable. I said, it is all downhill from here. You've managed a fire on the first day, uh, everything's going to be great from there. So I just, I just wanted to thank our faculty and our students for helping us manage that. So as far as an update, we have, uh, three hundred and eighty-eight students in the middle school enrolled six, seven, and eight. Uh, our class sizes vary from about twenty-three to twenty-six. Did want to point out that our grade seven class numbers are one fifty-five, and that is the largest class size I've had since I've been here. So we've been managing it through looping, uh, with teachers from grade six, but just wanted to put that on your radar. It's a very, very large class.
Which grade is that? That was.
That's grade seven.
Oh, that's our bubble class.
So we welcomed John Malloy from the high school, uh, over to our TLC program in the middle school. We continue to provide all the opportunities for middle school students, such as science limpiead, student government. Our student representative ma, uh, man, uh, mentioned that we have our first dance on October third. We've set up our school advisory councils. Uh, we have a Washington DC parent meeting scheduled for September twenty-fifth to get more information out about our Washington DC trip. And we have our open house tomorrow night at six P.M. Yes.
Uh, Mr. Santry, do we have a student, or a, a teacher that has stepped into the role of leading the Washington trip?
I am in deep negotiations with a teacher right now. Uh, I believe we'll, we'll have that solidified by the end of the week.
Excellent. That was something that I think every single person was.
We're going to have this Washington DC trip, and we're going to be able to fill that stuff.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Santry, for your work on that.
That's confirmation that it is happening. Okay, because there was.
We're meeting on the twenty-fifth, talk about the logistics.
Fantastic, and whoever does step up is going to have a lot of grateful.
Awesome.
People in the community.
That's great. High school is off to a good start. You know, student schedules have been finalized. Students have settled into their courses. Currently, we have four hundred and forty-six high school students. We're in the middle of our ad drop period, so providing you with a class size may be a little bit difficult till the end of the week. Our largest class size at this point is thirty-one, and that's really, we will cap that, and that's in our world language classes, which are very large, which is one of the reductions that we suffered last year.
Which language is that?
Uh, Spanish. Uh, we welcome Amy Monahan. She's our visual arts teacher. Fall sports are well underway, as well as our clubs. Our, our class advisors are gearing up for homecoming and float building, but that hasn't quite happened yet, but that'll be, uh, in the next couple of weeks. So overall, you know, besides the building fire, everything was, uh, everything's going well at the middle high school. You have any questions?
When is homecoming?
Yep, I was getting my question.
Homecoming's November first.
Ooh.
Which is a little bit later.
That's late.
It's the only way it coincides with the home game.
No, I mean, I.
Who are we playing?
TBD, because we had a team that was signed up and that could not field the team, so we're in the middle of finding another team.
Teachers, we're just going to get a lot of teachers. They're going to play the teachers.
There we go. That'll be fine.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you again for the response on the, to the fire. That was amazing.
It was, absolutely. Every single person needs to be commended in that. They were, everyone working, asking what they could do. It was wonderful.
I just want to say something about the fire. When I got the call that there was a fire and I figured out, like, who was getting who. By the time I got home, I asked Isaac about the fire and he kind of like looked at me and he's like, "Oh yeah, we had a fire." And I was like, "Oh, well, what did you do?" And he was like, "Oh, you know, like, we checked in and then like I just went and talked to my friends." And like, I know how terrifying a building fire could be. And for my son's abiding and lasting memory of that to be that I got to socialize with my friends, that's the best possible outcome. So I am truly grateful that you, your staff, and all the kids took it seriously, got everything done, and that there's no scar. It's just like a funny thing you say about what happened your first day of school.
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I also had the same experience with my high schooler. Andy got a half day of school, so.
They must have been in the front of the building because they couldn't see the black smoke and flames. The back was maybe a little bit different.
Mine, mine came home and she thought they were coming home early because the air conditioner had broke and it was going to be too hot in the school.
Well, it could have been too hot.
The air conditioner, there was on fire. So that's how that telephone began.
Yeah.
It's been the air conditioner.
She was so excited she got to come home because of the air conditioning and I was, "Did you miss?" Like, and she said, "Nobody looked panicked. Everybody was so calm. We just, there was no fire." Because it could, yeah, it could have been traumatic for kids and the staff was calm and everybody knew what to do, even when, the first day, these kids don't know.
I know. And prepared. Our high school staff had taken out their advisories to show them where in a fire drill you would meet. So when I hear from students that say, "Oh, I checked in," or "I checked in," or "I had accountability," that was wonderful.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping my kids safe.
You're welcome.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the FY twenty-five budget update. This is a discussion of, I think we've all been talking about it. So, um, I think that what we'd, what we'd like to do quickly, if we can, is to just ask some questions of you and Chris and sort of get a handle on what happened and how we found it and those kind of things. So obviously, we've talked about this in preparation for the meeting today. So some of these questions, like the questions I'm gonna ask, those are questions you've already been asked because I just had to ask them in order to be prepared for tonight. But I think that it's probably helpful that everybody in the committee get to ask questions as they want. And then next session, we will have an agenda item where it will be public, a special public comment. So not just the normal before and after, but one in the middle to talk about this. So the first question that I have is, what is the normal operating surplus for the school district? I think I alluded to it, but I just wanted you to sort of outline how superintendents think about that and how it works for an entity that cannot carry money from year to year.
How it works in Lunenburg is a little bit different than any place else I've been. And that carryover is a little larger than it typically is in most districts. It's, Chris has the exact numbers for you and that he can tell you what it was from FY twenty-two to twenty-three.
I'll just have to pull those up.
So just to like summarize a little bit of our conversation today. We had talked about the idea that, you know, it's impossible to forecast the budget down to the penny.
Correct.
And it is financially unhealthy to create a budget that results in a debt. And so everybody has a little bit of a cushion. And that cushion is to account for things like the building catching on fire and expenses related to that. Or the cushion could increase because, you know, a position that we had budgeted for doesn't get filled. And then we go through the line item transfer process that Mr. McNamara did a really good job of documenting. And that is how we fill a lot of the holes. But the reconciliation at the end usually involves patching some of the debts. And then we have some amount of money that we remit to the town. It's just this year, the remittance is significantly larger. So, Mr. McNamara, do you have the?
I do. I have FY twenty-two for you right now. So it looks like the available budget left for FY twenty-two was two nineteen, three sixty-two, twenty.
Okay.
For FY twenty-three. Just loading. FY twenty-three was one oh six, eight twenty-six, seventy-five. And FY twenty-four was... FY twenty-four was two fifteen, seven seventy-six, twenty-eight.
So where were the, you don't have to give us like every penny, but where were the major, where were the funds located in the budget? Like, were they all in revolving accounts? Were some of them in line items?
They were line items.
Okay.
For the majority of them.
Okay, and what were the larger surpluses that we had?
So the larger surpluses we had were medical and health services was one for FY twenty-four. It looks like for the total line item for medical and health services, we left almost thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars on that line item. Classroom instructional technology, twenty-four, six sixty-six. And then instructional materials, almost eighteen thousand. And that's just for FY twenty-four, just to name a couple.
Okay. What prevented the previous administration from finding these surpluses?
I can't really speak to the prior administration, but I think what I can tell you is that I've gone back and looked at twenty-two to twenty-four. I've done a cost comparison already for it. I can show you it at the next meeting. I'm just finalizing it right now. And I'll have a little summary of the takeaways from it. But the one thing I've noticed is there was money left on the table for those three years. About a hundred, there was money left on the table for those three years.
Yeah. Sorry.
Averaging about a hundred and fifty thousand, probably.
Is that more than your prior experience for?
Yes, generally, it's only about fifty thousand.
Is there any good financial or accounting principle that would have the remittance be as large as it has been in the past? Or should it be more like what Dr. Fortuna is saying is the norm?
I believe it's what Dr. Fortuna is saying. It's been the norm.
And do you think that there, obviously, this is a question we need to ask. Is there any sign of, of, you know, wrongdoing or is this just bad accounting?
I believe it's just poor oversight just of the previous administration. Just not keeping track of year-to-date actual comparisons. I know one of the things that we've already fixed right now is that I'm an approver on all requisitions that go forward. So it goes from me to Jody now. So I can look at each individual line item before I approve it in UNIS. So I'm not just gonna go through and approve every single thing that I see. If there's a negative line item, unless there's money to transfer from another account. But that's not probably best practices right away.
Have you changed how you have people ask for those funds in any, in any way? Do they need to attach proof of an invoice or?
Um, so we're working with UNIS right now, so they have to attach a quote with every requisition or it's just not gonna be approved.
Do all requisitions go directly through UNIS?
Yes.
Is that how it worked previously?
I believe so.
Okay.
Is there anything that you have found that should have been discovered by our outside eyes? Because we've had an accounting, we've had business manager, superintendent. Those people have always been there.
Yeah.
But we also had an outside accounting firm that was doing, you know, stopgap stuff while we were without a business manager. Why didn't, why didn't, why didn't they see these discrepancies?
I'm not sure. It could be a breadth of things, really. When you're doing an audit, you kind of focus in on certain areas. And sometimes there are oversights that get missed. So that could possibly be it.
And why didn't the corresponding oversights at the town? And it's our budget. It's our fault, but like, how did all of these people miss it?
I think that's the question everybody's asking right now and I don't have a great answer to that.
Day six, you're under Attorney, Attorney Tony.
I'm a, I'm a.
He does this to everyone.
I haven't gave him the answer.
Tony, Tony, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. But we can tell how you are, you know, when you have a witness.
You snap. It's a little scary, like.
How, how long was the, Chris's position not filled for?
A while.
A year?
Twelve hours.
Twelve hours?
Yeah, it, July first, June thirtieth, the previous person in the position left. And Chris was hired and came on board six days ago.
So Chris's position is actually a new position because previously we had a director of finance who slash HR manager, who was fulfilling both roles. Both of these jobs are full-time jobs and we had, we had one person doing two and in.
How long was she doing?
She was only doing it for a year, though, because before that, Mr. Cassidy left and Peter's in the.
No, but we were without someone for that.
Mr. Cassidy left.
November of.
Of twenty-four.
Yeah, no.
Twenty-three, yeah.
Twenty-three.
It's my first year on this. I had like a couple of months and then Mr. Cassidy left. And then we had TMS.
Then we had a gap for like.
Almost a year.
We, yeah, we had consultants.
I thought Dr. Brennan came to us to ask for the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hire, hire Chris. So that's why I'm just, I see somebody doing double duty and then you can understand why.
Yeah.
Some of the things.
You can keep asking questions, Tony. I didn't mean to.
Do you, do you think that we should, I mean, obviously, whatever the best practices thing, guys will do. But suppose they recommended us hiring an assistant for your position.
Yeah.
And the last audit that I sat on for a board, one of the things they pointed out was if you only have one person that has control and oversight of the money, if they get sick or if they leave or something bad happens, there's no one to pick it up, the slack. And like, you, you've been really good and regimented with your presentation tonight. I'm just concerned that we don't want anything to happen to you.
Yeah, no, I.
But what happens if you get, if you get sick? Who, who's gonna take over?
No, I think that's a good point, but I guess not, but. There is, it's always good to have a segregation of duties between accounting people. So there isn't manipulation with the numbers or embezzlement or anything. That's just from my knowledge of accounting, my professional background. There's always been a segregation of duties on what you do. But then again, looking at an assistant, I think you would have to look at the FY twenty-six budget to see if we could afford that too. Unless you hired like a point-five assistant, point-eight assistant. I'm just spitballing numbers right now, but for ideas. But it's always good to have a segregation of duties between accounting people.
The last question I have is just a general question. I have maintained that we need to have a public-facing, public-manipulable budget.
Yeah.
As soon as possible. And I think that the fact that this happened underscores that need even greater. When would we be able to have that budget? Not only so that we could show the people of the town, the parents, but also all of our, all of our partners that operate collective bargaining units.
Yeah.
People that are employed by the town, people that are employed by the school district. How long will it take to have a budget that's public-facing? It doesn't need to be updated with every line item transfer, but just something that people could look at and run the numbers. Because frankly.
FY twenty-six?
Yeah.
I would say in a week or two.
That is fifty-two times shorter than the previous answer I gave.
That's what I'm hoping.
Okay.
Unless there are any catastrophic events.
There's a fire.
Yeah.
You're not helping.
Anything happens to him in the next few weeks.
I know. We're, we're gonna get you armed security, so.
I, I do, we do need redundancy in the business office. I know that was a discussion in FY twenty-six. That was one of my priorities, was that we get one more person into the business office so that we have a business office. Because right now, it's a handful of, it's you and then the council.
Liz and.
Liz and Heidi.
Liz and Heidi and that's not Liz's job. You're. So I've been trying to advocate for that, but, because I think we need redundancy and we need to build resilient systems. And I know that last year, um, last year, we relied heavily on support staff when things got difficult and we leaned heavily on our support staff. And having more support staff in that role would be useful this year, especially because I think we are going to be asking a lot of you as our finance director. We're gonna be asking for a lot of information.
Yeah.
Although so far, I'm really impressed because I asked for numbers and got them like fifteen minutes later and that was amazing. How would, I, I'm sorry, you go.
I'm sorry. You go.
In, in an ideal world, what would a finance office look like?
To me?
Yeah.
Poor Chris has been here six days.
A reasonable but ideal world, would you?
Yeah, I think in an ideal world, you would have an assistant, but I guess it just comes down to budget. And then you would have somebody do the accounts payable, accounts receivable, if there is money coming in. And then a payroll person.
Okay. That's a lot more than we have right now.
Yeah.
But that's good, it's good to know. I don't think, it's just good to know what you.
Yeah, I can tell you just from looking at the cost comparison that I did, some of the driving factors that are driving up the costs is special ed tuition has gone up almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars since twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five. Utilities has gone up almost a hundred and twenty thousand. So those are just a couple. And you'll see more at the next meeting.
I guess I was just gonna say, and I think I kind of touched on this. It's crazy to me that we didn't know this in June, at least that we had some extra money. So that's, I think the monthly updates are really important to me. Not that we would be wasting money in June, but any nonprofit I've ever worked for knows when the end of the fiscal year is and spends the money they need to spend at the end of the fiscal year. There had to have been something we could have bought if we had a clue that we needed the money in June, so that's just my comment. The manipulable budget is interesting, Tony. I think that it would be great to have something more like that. But we wouldn't catch this problem because it would be, the problem is not the actual budget, right? It's the spending of the line items. So are you expecting that to be, I'm just, no.
No.
So one thing I, and I mentioned this to Dr. Fortuna when I first met with her, is one thing I think about the way we present our budgets for you moving forward is sort of as a layperson, the grant money that isn't, is not visible on the budget spreadsheets we've been doing. for you moving forward is sort of as a layperson, the grant money that isn't, is not visible on the budget spreadsheets we've been doing. And some of the federal funding, I don't know exactly how to make it more clear, but I think that can be really confusing to a person when they're looking at a line item, like, you know, a, a cost went up 100%. Did it go up because that grant, that position used to be grant-funded? You know, that position now isn't. So I think moving forward, I think that's something, and I defer to your expertise on that, but just sort of how we can maybe make a better story for people when they're looking at the line items. Because it took, takes, took me a long time to kind of understand some of that stuff. Can I ask a question again that I forgot?
Sure.
What didn't we get to do because we didn't expend this money?
I think our principals are in a better place to answer that than I am because I'm not totally familiar with what the landscape was last year.
I.
Not to put you guys on.
Because I want to talk about whether or not this was surplus money that the school didn't need or if it was, there are things that we went without because we failed to spend money that we should have spent.
I can tell you one thing was the ClearTouch boards at the primary school.
Is that what you're going to say, the clear?
Yes, because we gave that money back.
Yeah.
It was less than what I was, it was more than what I was asking for. So we are not where we need to be technology-wise for our students.
Oh, can you come up? Sorry, because I feel like people watching are going to want to hear this because it's, it's important.
Practical exam.
Yeah, this is a good example of the diff, there's wants and there's needs. So it's surplus money, but it's not money that we.
Right. And it's something we've been asking year after year. So technology getting, we now have version three that we can have interactive whiteboards. When they go up to Turkey Hill, every classroom has them. They even have them on a cart. I have two.
Tell us what they are.
So they're, it's almost like a television screen, but it's interactive. So you can do notes on it, you can, kids can go up and work on it. So if I have a student that needs notes of what we just did, I can print it on my computer and hand it to that student. They can go up, they can manipulate, you can do your slides. Right now, if you come to the primary school, you will see cords with Velcro over them. It is a tripping hazard. It's a safety issue. So it's not safe when you have littles that are walking around. We have them on rolling carts. Some teachers have them on bookshelves. We're being creative, but this is something, so for me when I.
Rolling carts, like?
Like rolling carts.
From my childhood?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
TV strapped on it.
So for me to hear that we gave back that money that I've been asking year after year, it is extremely frustrating because it's what our students need and we're not giving our students what they need to be successful. So that is just one example of how that money could have been spent.
I was disappointed we couldn't afford it in the budget for FY26 and that was one of the agonizing decisions we had to make, so.
We'll be asking for a mentorship.
Anybody, anybody else want to add like a practical example?
Positions were not unfilled.
Yeah. Because if you're back there, the, anyone watching on the cable access can't hear you and it gets frustrating.
There were, there were positions in the budget for FY25 that were cut in the budget process moving forward that were left unfilled in several power positions at the building that, you know, when I came in to, oh, and I got two spots I can fill. No, no, you can't because that was cut with leaving those empty. So that, that is another place where that could have gone. I know as I was looking through what I had been able to access in Munis, I didn't see a line item that said, oh, you got $40,000 here, you can keep spending. We just spent it.
Yeah.
So, you know, classroom materials, technology subscriptions for classroom use, all the things that were cut when we were preparing budget for FY25, a lot of that could have been there.
Yeah. Thank you. And I'm, I'm sorry.
Same at the high school. We had drastic reductions in services to students through reduction of our personnel. I mean, I remember the last two months of the budget, it was like an MMA fight for who's going to get that $500,000 free cash. And now we gave back 582. So all of those cuts are at a reduction at the high school for Paris.
We could have kept.
PE teacher.
We could have kept two vice principals and an athletic director.
Thank you. Yes.
Yep.
And from a curricular perspective, we cut iReady K8, which was an internal assessment that we had, as well as the MyPath that went along with it for individual student practice. IXL, which was a terrific math platform that's used grades six through 12, was also cut. Mystery Science at the primary, I mean, I can go on and on, Typing Club, like, there are a lot of other digital tools that we cut so that, yeah, to make over the budget. Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions for Chris or Dr. Fortuna? This is not, this is not a question I think has an answer, and I don't want anybody to answer. But I think this is something that I wrestle with as a volunteer. There is no way that any one of us could sit down and do your job as a volunteer to the level we would need to do it in order to find some mix-up like this. We just can't do that. It's not feasible. And so what we do is we rely on people and the words those people give us to determine what our decisions are. And when something like this happens, this is obviously not to you, either of you two personally, because you weren't here, it undercuts our ability to rely on what our information providers tell us. And so I think that as a member of the school committee, what I want to try to figure out how to do, you know, we'll have, we'll have an outside set of eyes look at the books, but I want to try to figure out a way to, to make that credibility link so that we can say, without having checked somebody's work, we trust and believe what you're telling us. And right now, having been on school committee for four years, I feel like I can't do that in the same way I did before. I mean, there are people, obviously, I mean, I think that anything Liz would tell me, I believe, as if she said it, gravity was working. And there are other people who have that level of credibility and that sterling of a reputation. But I think that this is something that really undercuts a volunteer's faith that trust has been placed in the correct people. And I don't know how to fix that. But I think if there's an answer to how to fix that, that would be really helpful going forward.
I think we're already moving in that direction though. I've, I've only been on the school committee since May, but I've followed along for the past few years. And how many times have you guys asked for a monthly update or a budget timeline like this? So I think Jody's already giving us that opportunity to believe her. And, I mean, we asked and she delivered and Chris is also already delivering more than we had before. And so I think hopefully we're on the road to that. I just remember hearing how many times you guys.
No update.
Asked for so much of that and it never came. Because I watched every four-hour meeting. It still ran to be on.
Two hours. We're two hours.
It still ran to be on the school.
It is very frustrating to have sat through these budget processes and then find out difficult decisions didn't have to have had been made. And that, I feel we've hurt credibility. I think the transparency is going to help. I think having the right people in the right positions helps.
You know, like, I, I think that, like, us losing credibility is a big issue with the town and with the other committees in town. And that's something that I take really seriously. But more importantly, I think about like a second grader who should have gotten extra support through MTSS, but we cut that person. And now did that cut that didn't need to have happened make the difference between that kid being a good and confident reader in a way that lets him or her engage with education so that by the time they're in 12th grade, they don't need any supports? Or even worse, that, you know, our decision made it so that they don't stay in school? Like, those sort of, you know, butterfly effects are things that weigh heavily on my conscience and I just, you know, like, our credibility is important and I want to keep it and obviously we owe the taxpayers an explanation. But our, our first charge is to the, you know, improving student achievement. And some of the cuts that we made hit people in really critical and vulnerable positions where just a slight bit more money or a slight bit more time from a person who is a full-time and cut back to a part-time could make the difference between somebody finishing school and not finishing school. And like, I, I feel like we need to go to like each second grader and be like, I'm really sorry we screwed this up. And each parent of each second grader would be like, I'm really sorry we screwed this up. And, you know, I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to reconcile that with our obligations, but I feel like that's what we should be doing.
Can I ask, so we have a history in this town of purposeful mismanagement. It was embezzlement decades ago at this point, but the memories of this town are very long. So I want to ask, have you seen anything in the book so far that makes you suspicious of purposeful mismanagement? Because I think that's an important thing to answer.
Not yet.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Chris, thank you for being on the hot seat.
Thank you.
Hey, welcome. Thanks for joining us.
One other thing to note, one of the driving factors was the health insurance has gone up quite a bit. Six hundred and sixty-five thousand since 2022.
But that was, okay.
All right. I think we are on to our next IT topic, which is subcommittee reports. Just really quick, has anybody met with any of the subcommittees? All right. Emily, why don't you go first?
The Master Planning Steering Committee, we've met several times over the summer, actually, and things are moving forward. We had to adjust quorum because we weren't able to get anybody together for a really long time. It took a while to get going. So that's been adjusted, which has made it easy to move forward. New positions have been filled as well, but we are currently still looking to fill a member-at-large position if anybody is interested in doing that. The committee is working hard to encourage growth while preserving what makes Lunenburg Lunenburg. We are trying to find a balance between development and preservation through the initiatives asked for by the town and what the committee feels are must-haves versus what are just nice-to-haves. Currently, the committee has reached out to other committees and boards in town to gather input related to the draft of the goals for the master plan. And a public meeting and presentation is coming soon.
Excellent. Anybody else?
Can I just talk about the PTL for a minute?
Sure.
So the PTL, which is Lunenburg Parent-Teacher Organization, we have our first meeting of the year next Monday. I think it's at seven. I'm trying to find my notes. It's next Monday at seven at the middle high school. We have it in the middle school project room. So if you come through the front door, we go to the left, it's over there. I encourage any parents who are listening who want to come and join us. We are a low-pressure organization.
With succinct meetings.
With succinct meetings. And we're planning some fun things for the year. We will have a gears, we will have sales soon for sweatshirts and shirts and everything. We're working on that. And, I don't know, we have some other good ideas we've got going on, but.
You going to do the cruise night again?
Yeah, maybe cruise night. We'll definitely do our special someone dance, which is a big hit. But, yeah. So come join us.
Laura, do you have any budget?
The municipal building design committee has met twice. Once was right before graduation. And then we came before the select board to talk about what they wanted going forward and future steps. And then I guess they've met one more time, but I was not aware because it was being called the Nelsor. So we'll have to look into that.
The Athletic Advisory Committee has not met, but we taught, I guess Peter and I count as the steering committee. We talked to Shanina about scheduling a meeting and my hope is that that will be done sometime this month. So other than that, I don't have any other updates. There is also, oh, one other update. We are also scheduling, and Mr. Sanchez is looking right at me. We, we're scheduling the advisory committee for the high school. So it should be, when is, this Thursday?
I believe it's the 26th.
Oh, okay. All right. So I need to look at my calendar, but it's the 26th at three. If anybody who has a high school or is interested in attending, they are generally really smart and engaged parents. So I just sit there like a bumpkin. Anything else? All right. I open it up for public comment on matters that we discussed tonight. Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Chairman. Oh, yeah, my assistant. Levity is fun. You know, you have to keep laughing. I don't think that there are 12 people in the hierarchy of the, of the town of Lunenburg that could put together the budget that you folks look at and not because they're not smart. Time constraints, you know, families are traveling, all the, it's, it's unbelievable. So what you have to do is trust the people that work with you. And if they aren't doing what they're supposed to do, it's an exercise in futility. It's like shoveling sand against the tide. And we've, we've seen that, okay? So that's the, the basic, I think, you know, people are, and even the people that are working in the, in the town, whole town. You know, they're overworked, there's not enough of everything that they need to do. That's, that's the scenario that they have to work with. So it's, it's really not easy. So that's my take on this thing. And you can, you can go, what you need is a forensic accountant to go through all of this stuff and you're wasting your time, you know? The, the, the previous superintendent was a very, very capable person, okay? And I never thought that I would say, what I'm going to say, that, that I, I really miss having Hop Along, not here. Okay? Hop Along Cassidy, okay? I, I, because there was people coming in, out, I mean, it was a cluster you know what. So I, I'm not, I'm not sure that, that it's a thing that you can put your thumb on it. And I'm not sure that, that adding more people just to it will solve it. The people have to really want to work and, and do the right thing. And sometimes that, that doesn't always happen. I, I have lived in Lunenburg for 50 years, so I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. I would be remiss if I didn't thank each and every, every one of you for what you do. It's a volunteer situation, as you well know, you put in unbelievable hours into things. And it's just, thank you for what you do. Really, thank you for what you do. But the good news that I want to give you is this. Fifty years I've been here and I've seen everything that's going on. This is a nice community made up of wonderful people. Just because a few things happen and they're catastrophic, they're, they're not easy, does not mean that this isn't salvageable and, and a good place to bring up your family and, and to really prosper because of you and new people and the people in the, in the support functions because of them working together. And that's what we have to do. So going forward, we have to not pick and, we have to work together and realize that we're not going to get everything we want, but we will get this thing squared away because of good people like yourself. So again, thank you from 82 Highland Street. I, I really appreciate what you're doing. I know I speak for many, many, many folks in town. And the new superintendent is charming and I look forward to working with you. That's the suck-up. Thank you.
I think we've got a comment from Renee Emke.
Renee Emke, Six Iris Court, member of SLAC board, but I'm speaking as myself tonight. So I learned of this last night. I'm not going to lie, it was a gut punch. I was not happy. Did not sleep well. I was not happy, did not sleep well. I know the superintendent, who I've had the pleasure of meeting at the first tri board so one time, and Mr. McNamara, haven't had the pleasure of meeting you yet, you guys are the messengers. You walked into this mess. I want to give it, offer a slightly different perspective. The first thing I thought of was, this was the override year. This amount of money is 61% of that override amount. 61% is going back. First thing I thought of was, well, increase in taxes for that override, 61% higher than it needed to be. Then, and as timing would have it, there was a fire on the first day of school. The first tri board meeting, fire chief presented what the fourth shift would cost, something that the fire department's been asking for, for a few years now. I'll round it up, 470,000. This 582 is more than enough to cover that. I was made aware that the day of the fire, there was a serious medical incident going on. First engine that arrived on scene had one person on it, one, because of the other medical emergency that was going on. I mean, this could have been so much worse, so much worse. This money could have gone to that. And it's, we've had turnover, superintendent, business manager, the school committee, majority of the school committee has turned over. I know you guys are aware that this can't happen again, so I'm stating the obvious, but I need to get it off my chest. Even leading up to this, in the past, I don't know, six months or whatever, there have been things that have come up. Athletic revolving fund was running in a deficit. I was told a number of over $100,000. There was the ski team. Lunenburg was paying more than their fair share for the ski team. And then even, you know, a one-month copy fee of $19,000, a line item transfer. I mean, they're, 2020 hindsight, you know, I think there were signs that things weren't, I don't know, the eyes weren't on it, policies, whatever, but you spoke to the trust and the confidence. Yeah, it's been damaged, like, speaking for myself, and I don't think I'm alone, and I think you guys feel the same way. And I ask you, please, please put eyes on this. Please, ask the questions, provide the answers. This cannot happen again. I, we can't go back. I would love to know more, I mean, we heard a little bit of what didn't get bought, staffed, whatever. I would love to know more about that and understand it. I heard tonight that possibly there was a double booking, if you will, of paras. Okay, that's not good, but at least if half of the paras got filled, that means we didn't lose out on paras if they were just double booked, double budgeted. So I would like to know and understand, and maybe, you know, that could be a part of the tri board, to talk about what we lost out on, how this happened. So I just want to implore you, please, you said it tonight, but just the eyes, the questions, please be very extra diligent. I know it's a lot of work. I sat through the rainbow budget season. We all sat in this room far too many nights, and I'm not going to keep you any later because Tony's passed his bedtime. But yeah, this hurts, I'm not going to lie. I'm not, I just say it, what, how I feel, and this, this one hurts. So, please.
Can I just add, and it hurts me too, because I was the one up here screaming about needing more money, and when you say that about the, you know, I mean, there was a lot of parents who were involved, but I was a real, obviously, big advocate for more money in the override that year, and, you know, I was doing what I thought was right and best, and I still think the schools need the money, and I still, you know, I still think that, but we have to be better, because this is just, it just, this is, it's awful.
The key question is, was the override number the right number, and it just didn't get managed properly?
Right.
Or was it not the right number to start with? I don't know. I hope we can get that answer.
Yeah.
I think you're going to have to provide that answer. And I'm sorry that you walked into this.
I mean, I, yeah.
The one thing I want to say in response is that I think that we should have been more engaged in hiring and managing hires. We let, and I know that at the time, we didn't feel like we had any options, but we let a critical staff position go unfilled during a contested budget season, and it was just, we can't do that. And like, it's not, it's not the right thing to do to say like, well, we'll just have everybody cover a little. This is too important.
But it was filled when the budget was being spent.
That is true. And so that's what I mean by.
That's 100%.
We need to be better about hiring and managing hires, and we will be ruthless as necessary.
That's a tall order, because how do you know what's being filled, what's being bought? I mean, we have to trust the people who are the experts, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I've made bad hires, and it's not fun, but you find out they're bad hires one way.
Mm-hmm.
It's not pleasant. So anyway, thank you for bringing, being forward and acknowledging it, and committed to not letting this happen again.
Thank you, Renee.
Peter, we have somebody on the, do, I noticed that their hand has been up, I don't know if I, does anybody know who was first?
It's TJ. I think. I can see.
It's TJ, it's only one.
Oh, no, I know it's TJ. I just said, who is first between TJ and Peter?
Yeah, I can kind of read it.
Are you sure? Okay.
You can read that.
All right. TJ, if you want to, Liz, can we let TJ speak?
Good, Tony?
Yep.
Awesome. TJ Loughlin, 207 Rolling Acres Road. Yeah, I mean, first off, I wanted to say, Mr. Santri, I appreciate the MMA reference. I do MMA myself, so it's fun, funny to hear that in a school committee meeting. Secondly, I really do resonate with a lot of what Ms. Emke said. She kind of took the words right out of my mouth, you know, with the number of 61% of the override. What I think is getting mixed up here in this meeting is FY '25 and FY '26. If, we actually missed some of the audio in the beginning, it was cut off for quite a while, so I don't know if this was covered earlier on. But my understanding is this is an FY '25 surplus, which is the override year, which the cuts that were made were ESER cuts. So we didn't cut beyond ESER, which is, which is a really important thing to remember here, because if we made only ESER cuts, and then we dug in with 500,000 or so into that budget, what does that mean? And I think that question has been asked a lot here, but does that mean we didn't offer the services, or did we actually make cuts that we didn't approve as a town? And I think that's important, because, you know, what I learned after the override passed was that the schools are budgeted money, and then the schools can decide what they want to do with that money. So I hear you, Tony, that, you know, it would be nice for the citizens to have a flexible sort of dynamic budget, which I actually built with software myself for the override year. Didn't make it public, but I made it for that reason, it's valuable. But actually, when the schools can make decisions after they get the budget, we actually don't know what happens as citizens. Were paras let go, were teachers let go? We saved, we had a savior list, these are all the teachers we saved, these are all the paras we saved. But it came to be known to me that those don't actually have to be saved at the end of the day, and they don't have to be cut. Others, cuts can be made, transfers can be made, we could invest all of it in athletics if we wanted to, we could totally cut athletics after the budget's made. So all that's to say is like, the budget is one thing, but now we're talking about actuals that we don't have access to, and we're not even really informed of it after the fact. You know, I was criticized personally going into FY '26 of, did the schools actually spend all the override money? And it was not an outright easy answer. And the other question that I was asked personally, probably with Mandy too, was, did actually all the teachers that we said we were going to save get saved? Same with paras, right? And it's not an obvious answer because of the shifts and things that are made. So, you know, I agree with Emke that this is alarming, and it erodes trust, especially for people like me, and I hope, Mandy, that put a lot on the line, and I put, you know, on the line two years in a row for two overrides. I actually went to bat for the school committee in front of the finance committee to say, we all trust what they're saying. We have to trust them, the experts, and now I'm finding out that we couldn't. And I don't understand that. Right? Like, how can, how can, what could you even show us that makes us trust you now? I don't understand it, to be honest. I already did that. So anyway, I think we do need answers, because what was cut in FY '25, I know it was cut in FY '26. I think we should not focus on the FY '26 cuts first. I think we need to figure out what was not provided in FY '25, and then we can figure out the major implications to FY '26 budget, you know? Do we, should we have actually decreased that budget by the 500 and started with less money? Would we have cut more? Did we not have to make cuts? It's all very not clear to me now. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. No one else is online, and Peter's in line, so.
Peter Beardmore, 282 Pleasant Street. Welcome, Dr. Fortuna. Welcome, Mr. McNamara. I actually came for a different reason tonight, but I feel compelled to comment on the major topic of this evening. First of all, as a former member of the school committee, I think, you know, I share, just like the other members, in some amount of responsibility here, you know? I feel like we didn't ask the right questions at the right time, particularly as FY '25 was getting into the latter months. But let's also not lose perspective here, and I think the right question was asked, was, is this a budgeting problem, or is this an operational problem? Was this a management problem? And I believe it was a management problem, but I also believe that the school committee actually put a lot more on the administration in the last several months of FY '25 than they could probably handle. Let's keep in mind some context here. At no time in the last two years have I ever heard that Munis is good. Not once.
Yes.
Not once. And the school department shares in Munis with the town. Not once in the last two years have I heard we're caught up on POs, on payments, on invoices. There's always been a backlog for the last two years. Well, why is that? Well, because we're efficient. We're tightly knit with the town. We work together really well, and we save on costs. We're not saving a damn dime doing it that way, in my opinion, because everything requires a phone call, so-and-so is out for the day, town hall's closed on Friday, one thing after another. The operational part of this thing really needs a look. And yes, I do think we need to look at '25 and see what didn't get spent. But I actually disagree with the previous speaker. I think we really need to look at FY '26 and make sure that, we don't need to redo the budget, we need to make sure that we're doing the budget. I can cite you two examples, and I won't do it publicly tonight, of things that I know we're spending money on, that I know we cut. And they're not executed. Is Munis updated? Is Munis coded correctly for the FY '26 budget? I suspect that it's not. And if it is, and if you believe it is, I would say, please double check. The administration has a responsibility to carry out the budget that the school committee votes for. And I think ultimately, that's where we've fallen short, and I just want to make sure that going forward, we're intent on doing that. And that means the budget, but it also means all of the functions of the school, such as spending when it comes to grant funds as well. Postings, hirings, they should be approved by the school committee before they're made, when they're funded off-budget. Lastly, I just want to say, with respect to the unspent money, the money is not lost. The money's still there. It's free cash. It's going to roll over, it's going to be appropriated in one fashion or another. It now falls under a different fiscal policy, but the money is not gone. This is nowhere near as bad as what happened here 23-odd years ago, right? The money is still here. So let's keep that in mind, right? Okay. My actual reason for coming tonight, I am your representative to the capital planning committee.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you for appointing me.
Thank you.
The capital planning committee held its first meeting tonight, concurrent with your meeting across the street, and the town manager outlined that capital plan requests to the CPC are due by the first of October-ish. So I would ask you to, please, get on that horse. Now, the good news is, is that I think a lot of that work has kind of been done, because if you recall, last year, we kind of flipped FY '27 and FY '26 to deal with the primary school air conditioner issue, and all of the grant nonsense that we encountered with that project. So I think most of the prethinking has been done there in terms of what we wanted to get funded for the current fiscal year, that we really now need to get funded for FY '27. It should be at least considered a starting point, but I would encourage you to get moving on that, and to whatever extent I can be helpful or consult with you folks, I'd be happy to do that. And I would expect that, and the discussion did occur tonight, the school committee is usually not the first to present, it's usually the last amongst all of the department heads. So while it's due on the first, I think the actual presentation will likely happen in late October, early November, but it is still important that this gets worked through as soon as possible.
Would you like to come to our next meeting and discuss with us the capital planning?
If I'm available, yeah, I'd be happy to. One thing we are going to take advantage of this year is because there isn't a sitting school committee member on the capital planning committee, we will likely meet frequently on Wednesdays. Because, as you know, there's a planning board member, a select board member, a school committee rep, and a finance committee member, that's all of the days of the week when it comes to meetings, so.
As our representative, I'm going to need you to agitate for us in the Peter Beardmore way.
I'm committed to advocating for you, of course.
Peter's going to have to go way out of his way to agitate.
Wait, can I, I know we're like closing in on a long time, but can you give me two seconds on how usually the capital planning list comes together for the school committee?
Sure.
Because I am new to this, and I want to make sure I understand.
Typically, what the superintendent did was present a list of, you know, anywhere from 15 to 20 capital expenses, and then each member would rank their preference.
Okay.
And then one member sort of averaged out. Brian did it, and he's a math teacher, so he did not use averages, I forget what it was.
Mean.
The mean, yes. And so he created.
So we need a math teacher.
Maybe we'll use the spreadsheet from last year.
He created a list of expenditures, and then, once we had done that, what Peter's saying is, once we had compiled that aggregated list, we received notice that the green grant that we received.
Yeah, I remember all that. But then, so then Peter takes the list to the capital planning committee, and the capital planning committee decides on how to spend it.
They were aggregated other stuff.
Technically, technically, the request is made through the town manager by the department head.
Okay.
So you would authorize the superintendent to bring it forth. The superintendent will, and usually the facilities director, would present that to the capital planning committee at some point in October and November, and we do our thing.
And then at town meeting in the spring, we have a whole list that we vote on together.
But that's more or less.
And that's free cash, right? Is I'm understanding budgeting? Is I'm understanding budgeting?
The capital plan is funded, it's, it falls under our fiscal policies. It's a combination of a percentage of the free cash.
Yeah.
Free cash first goes to some other places, and then kind of falls down to capital. And then there is a raise and appropriate contribution that's typically made in addition to that. There is also borrowing that you can do, we haven't historically done in previous years, but when you look at some of the really big things that we need to deal with, like the track and field, I think there's a very likely scenario that we will be discussing some sort of regular borrowing kind of scenario to deal with that.
So the raise and appropriate is money that is just in the yearly levy that goes towards capital expenditures.
Yes.
And then after that, the borrowing. Do we have borrowing in the levy limit that we use for this kind of stuff? Or is the borrowing all stuff that would have to go to a levy override, which is not a operating override? It's a capital override? What do you call it?
So you're, you're going a little deeper than I wanted to go tonight, but I'll-
I'm sorry, Peter, you know, I have to understand this.
It's, it's, in, in recent history, we have not borrowed to fund the capital plan.
Yeah.
Bottom line. However, you can do regular borrowing to fund the capital plan. There is a history outside of the last six or seven-year window, and that has been done.
When they need the big fire.
Basically, that is a, that is a town meeting vote for regular borrowing, and it's just supported by debt service in the budget.
But it's not an override?
It's not a debt exclusion. You would not do an override typically to borrow money, you would do what's called a debt exclusion.
A debt exclusion vote, which is what the town hall would have been last year.
The process is effectively-
And Marshall.
The process is effectively the same as an override. It requires a town meeting authorization and a ballot vote for a debt exclusion.
But so there is regular borrowing that's allowed, sometimes under specific situations. You're saying a large fire truck, probably not a building.
A building would be a debt exclusion.
A debt exclusion.
We have funded fire trucks through regular borrowing.
But that's what I mean, like, through regular borrowing, there is a level, there's part of the levy limit that is include, includes some debt service with regular borrowing.
In our fiscal policy, the-
Sorry that I have so many questions tonight.
No, that's fair. It's good that we have this opportunity to, and I apologize, this has taken a bit more time than I planned. In the, in the fiscal policy, there are limits-
Sorry, sorry, Tony, you've lost control.
On both excluded and non-excluded debt, the non-excluded debt, I believe the limit is, the service on that debt cannot exceed 4% of the total budget.
Okay.
And I believe right now it's half-ish to less than half of that.
We do have.
Significantly under what we're able to do. That's fine. I just wanted to make sure I understood how borrowing works, that you could do either or, I'm sure there's something I can read as well.
Some people think this financial practice is-
What happens to the, what happens to the things that are already on the capital plan when we add more things to the capital plan? Things that haven't been accomplished yet?
Yeah, so the way the capital plan works is, you will actually be asked to submit a five-year plan. So you'll be asked to submit items for FY '27, '28, '29, and '30.
Right, and we already have some coming up.
So, so, and you'll relook at what we did last year and reauthorize some requests. The capital planning committee, our charge is to prioritize the current year and also comment on the out-years. And we make a priority list that is submitted to the town manager, and it's actually the town manager, the, the capital planning committee is largely advisory. The town manager actually finalizes the priority list and then applies a recommendation for funding. And so typically, it's like available funds, and you kind of draw the line at what you can do and what you can't do. The stuff that's below the line becomes the committee's responsibility the next year to figure out. Either don't do, or roll it over to the next year, or whatever.
So when the superintendent makes a list of things that we have to approve, can it include the things that are already on the capital plan, or are we-
No, you wouldn't, I mean, if it's already approved, you wouldn't do it.
But those things won't be moved-
But here, here's a scenario.
They'll just move, be moved up possibly?
If, if it's already been approved in a previous fiscal year's capital plan, then typically you wouldn't touch it. With the possibly, possible exception of, and this has unfortunately been the case over the last couple of years, it's underfunded, right? So security doors come to mind, right? Hate to bring up a sore subject, but we did not request enough money to do all the doors at Turkey Hill, right? So maybe you would decide that you wanted to complete that project, and you would request additional funding for something like that.
So it's going to get bumped up, or it's going to get bumped up.
So we had to do-
For example, the primary playground is on my radar, and that's on the capital plan already.
The primary playground was part of our original recommendation to be included, but then when we did the AC thing-
That swap.
-we flipped it. So back to my earlier recommendation around looking at what we had requested last year for '26 and moving that to '27, the design for the playground and the design for the traffic and parking for the primary school were part of that, were part of that ask.
And we linked that together, making sure it's not-
And we linked them together because it's one space, and you don't want to necessarily put the playground where you would put a driveway, and vice versa.
Oh, because it needs a new driveway.
Yeah, because originally it was playground then driveway, and-
And it was like, well, what if we want to rewrite the traffic where we're putting the playground, right? So you'd want to kind of do them together, ideally.
Plus, if we have someone out looking, yeah, okay.
For anyone playing the let's get wonky at school committee drinking game, you're all drunk now.
All right. Well, you're past your hour and a half.
Hey, this is my jam.
Thank you, everybody.
Money is my jam. That's what I'm here for.
Thanks, Peter. Does anybody else have any public comments? I just want to make a very quick public comment. There were three people that are emeritus members of town government that I consulted with before talking tonight. I want to thank each and every one of them. One of them asked not to be named, one of them was Carol Archibald, and one was Dave Rogers. And I do not like delivering bad news, but they all gave me really helpful insights. So I want to thank them, and especially Mr. Rogers, because I was not feeling great about talking, and he just said, you got to do it, so.
Well, thank you for representing us.
He saw you needed a pep talk. I kind of love that, so thank you.
I think we're, we're all finished the agenda. If anybody would like a motion, make the motion to adjourn at 10, or at 9:38?
Any board members have public comment?
Oh, does anybody else have public comment, if we want to do that?
No.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Any seconds?
Second.
All right, let's go. Thank you.